Counsel, come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you call the roll, please?
DeYoung.
Here.
Branderhorst.
Here.
Banztra.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Spoor.
Here.
So before we begin our agenda tonight, I wanted to take a moment to congratulate all of the runners within our city. I'm sure most everyone is aware that the Pella High Boys won the state championship across country. The Pella High Girls won the state championship across country, and both Pella Christian Boys and Girls both finished in the top ten. So that's some pretty remarkable feats by this community. So I just want to make sure that to add my congratulations to the runners and the coaches and everybody that's involved. And also on behalf of the community, I want to make sure to congratulate those runners, those coaches, those parents and everybody else that had anything to do with it. It's pretty neat to have something like that happen. A great reflection on our community because cross-country is not easy. I've never run it, but it doesn't look easy. It takes a lot of work. So very impressive. So congratulations.
Genetics, right.
Yeah, five-eleven, two-hundred-and-thirty-pound guys don't run throughout. Okay, so we'll get started. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
Still moved.
Support.
Banztra, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banztra.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, time now for a public forum. So anyone wishing to address counsel regarding any agenda item, I'd ask that you please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Banztra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, public hearing on the matter of adoption of plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the construction of the Pella Fiber Transport Network to IMU. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And for those in attendance, I'd like to direct their attention to the big board, and also for those at home watching on Pella Fiber as well. Specifically, as Mayor Duarte stated, tonight's public hearing is on a proposed transport link between the city of Pella's telecommunications utility and Indianola Municipal Utilities telecommunications utility. And what we're planning on doing is sharing a transport link between the two communities on this. We're both paying a third-party provider for backup services for our respective telecommunications utility. What this line would be doing, what would occur with this line is, we would build a new line, and we would share ownership of the line. And so instead of paying a third-party provider, we would actually own the line. And this would allow both communities to have future growth on their telecommunications utility as well. So the transport link would simply connect the two utilities together, service of important backup to our telecommunications utility. And the same would be said for Indianola Municipal Utilities. So recently, we did hold a bid letting on this project. And as you can see, the results of the bid letting are up on the big board. Kramer Service Group was the little bidder of $1,838,860.28. The high bid on the project was just over $2,670,000. It is important to note that the engineer's estimate of cost was at $2,354,000. So for those bids, or the proposed bid that we have tonight awarding to Kramer Service Group is significantly below the engineer's estimate. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. I believe we've covered this, but probably the most important part of this is we have an existing contract in Indianola Municipal Utilities. And basically, what that contract states is, as far as the construction and the engineering of this project, we're splitting the cost at fifty percent to each party. So our expected cost for this project would be $919,430.14. Now finally, it is important to note that the Indianola Municipal Utilities has already approved, awarding the contract to Kramer Service Group. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation. Oh, I got a little bit more, got ahead of myself. So we have two resolutions on this matter tonight. Resolution sixty-five-eleven formally adopts plan specifications, form of contract, accepts engineer's estimate of cost for the project. Resolution sixty-five-twelve formally awards the contract to the Kramer Service Group in the amount of $1,838,860.28. And the city's share of this contract would be fifty percent of the contract as well. Now, as far as the timeline for the project, if council were to approve this contract, we'd have the contract, and performance bond would be presented for council's consideration on November fifteenth. And assuming that resolution would also be passed, the final completion for this project is scheduled for September of two thousand and twenty-three. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation this evening. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
All right, thank you. Mike, any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Okay, counsel, comments?
I'm not super familiar with bidding, nor Kramer Service Group. How do we know these corporations capable of doing the work? And I know it's a contract, so they have to eventually, but how does that vet it out, or is there any work?
Kramer's currently working on the Google project up in Des Moines. That's how they heard about our project. They've got crews up in the building now.
And I believe Dwayne Newcom is also working on, Newcom is the project engineer, they're also working on components of the Google project as well, and they are familiar with Kramer as well, so.
Anything else, counsel? Okay, any comments from any member of the audience about this? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
Support.
Banztra, Hopkins, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banztra.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, the mic's already explained. We'll have a couple of resolutions to discuss and approve. So Resolution number six-five-one-one entitled, "Resolution Adopting Plan Specification Form Contract and Estimate of Cost for the Construction of the Pella Fiber Transport Network to IMU." Can I get a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Support.
Branderhorst, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banztra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution number six-five-one-two entitled, "Resolution Making Award of Construction Contract for the Construction of the Pella Fiber Transport Network to IMU." Can I get a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Banztra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to public hearing on the proposed amendment number one to the Webster Park Urban Renewal Plan. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Duarte stated, we're considering amendment number one to the existing urban renewal plan for Webster Park. A little bit of background on this urban renewal. Council originally adopted the urban renewal plan in two thousand and eighteen. And what we do is, we have a map of urban renewal area up on the big board. The area to the north is, right here is Independent Street, just is the three homes at the time, north of Independent Street. This is Main Street off to the east. We have P Street to the south, and then Broadway Street right away is where the plan extended. Now, when we look at this urban renewal plan, I think it's very important to understand why the urban renewal plan was created. And at the time when it was created, we had the old Webster School that was on this site. In addition, we had three homes that were north of Independent Street, and we did have coenforcement issues with the existing yellow house that was at the intersection of Main Street and Independent Street at that time. So in two thousand and eighteen, council formed an urban renewal plan with the goal at the time was redevelopment opportunities for blight remediation and facilitating additional housing within our community. Now, as far as the blight remediation, it is important to note that we did hire a consultant that reviewed the properties of the urban renewal plan. And I believe offhand, it was somewhere right around seventy-five percent of the properties of the urban renewal plan, the council, the consultant reported to council that they met the blight definition or blight standards under Iowa law. Subsequently, council delayed, declared this area a blighted area, and formed the urban renewal plans. Overall, with the urban renewal plan, once again, the intention was for blight remediation through economic development, and specifically with adding additional housing for the community as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the amendment that we're considering this evening, we have two principal components that we're adding on. Main Street Market Development Agreement, we're actually going to be talking about that in greater detail in our next presentation. The second item is really just a housekeeping item, and I want to stress, we're not aware of any additional development agreement requests. But the reason why we list the development agreement request in the amendment is it's fairly expensive to amend urban renewal plans. And by listing the development agreement of this, this prevents any unnecessary amendments to and legal fees associated with any future amendment request for the development, for the amending the urban renewal plan on that as well. Now, as a part of the amendment process, Iowa code does require the city to hold consultation with the effective taxing entities prior to amending the urban renewal areas. We did hold a consultation on October fourteenth, and we did not receive any comments. And in addition, none of the taxing entities intended consultation as well. So with this, Mr. Mayor, this concludes the city staff presentation. And we are recommending approval of amendment number one to the Webster Park Urban Renewal Plan. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Counsel, comments, questions?
The only one I had was maybe more of semantics. It acts like that we are determining this to be a blighted area, or the wording of the resolution, but I thought that had been done already.
Yeah, and once again, with the resolution in consistence, consistency with it, this area has already been declared a blighted area by the Pella City Council on it. And so my guess is, this resolution is drafted by the legal council, and the blight language carried over was necessary for it, because this is a special urban renewal plan that was based on blight remediation. That's why you do see the blight and language in the resolution.
Okay, yeah, I just thought it was a bit confusing, because it seems like we're approving something that has already been approved. And maybe that's just a title issue, I don't know.
Yeah, potentially, the resolution was drafted by the Alder's Law Firm, and my guess is it ties specifically to this type of urban renewal plans. The reason why the blight remediation is also associated with it as well.
Okay, anything else, counsel? Any member of the audience have a comment about this particular item? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Banztra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to Resolution number six-five-one-three entitled, "Resolution Determining an Area of the City to be a Blighted Area and that Rehabilitation, Conservation, Redevelopment, Development, or Combination thereof, Such Area is Necessary in the Interest of the Public Health, Safety, or Welfare of the Residents of the City, Designating Such Area is Appropriate for Urban Renewal Projects and Adopting Amendment Number One to the Webster Park Urban Renewal Plan." Anything to add to what we've already discussed?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to, for approval?
Still moved.
Who's supporting? DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Banztra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Public hearing on the, we move to a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with Pella Main Street Market LLC. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And I would once again like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Duarte stated, this resolution would be approving a development agreement at Pella Main Street Market. Now, for a little bit of background on this, the terms in the development agreement that we're considering this evening do align, are very similar to the terms that was considered by the council when we approved the conditional resolution of support for this development on July sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Based on that council approval, the developer is completed or is nearing completion on the Pella Main Street Market, the resolution that we're approving this evening would be for the official development agreement. But once again, I want to emphasize that these terms were discussed with the city council on July sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Now, when we talk about the Main Street Market, it's very important to note that it'll be very similar in operation to the Gateway Market in Des Moines. We do have the various items that describe the services that will be available, and the products available at the Main Street Market. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the developer's responsibilities, it's very important to note that, once again, this was part of the Webster Park Urban Renewal Plan. When we look at this and consider this on July sixth, and consider the additional resolution of support, we also recognize that what the developer is proposing was a very unique dining option for the community. And the reason why I'm mentioning this is, when we had considered it on July sixth, there was a finding in city staff still leads this way, that dining, additional dining amenities, restaurants were a key strategic role of the cities in the city's comprehensive plan, and it's needed within the community. When you look at this area, and generally where the Pella Main Street Market is, if you can remember the map on the urban renewal area, and the location of the big yellow house and the two other houses on there, those were blighted areas. And so the developer's taken a blighted property, and is proposing to build a very fine addition to our community. So please keep that in mind when we consider this development agreement this evening. Now, as far as the developer's responsibility, under the development agreement, they need to construct the market by December thirty-first of this year, and it needs to be in accordance with all city standards, including the improved plant unit development ordinance. We believe the developer's on track to do that. It will be required to sign a minimum tax assessment agreement. In fact, they've already signed that and agreed to those terms. That minimum tax assessment agreement is four point four million dollars. And please keep that in mind, and we'll explain this here very shortly. But that annual assessment will also be, will be increasing on a two percent basis every year under the terms of the development agreement. Now, as far as the operation of the market, they're going to be required to operate the market for six days a week for at least eight hours per day as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the city's responsibilities, please keep in mind, once again, before we talk about the city's responsibilities, what stood in this place instead of the main street market now was three blighted homes that we had previously on there. But what the cities agreed was very similar to what we agreed to, to the South Main Development, is to provide the developer with fifteen annual tax increment financing grants in the amount of a hundred percent of the tax increment. So we're talking about the additional valuation that is going to be generated by the property on it, and that's the tax increment financing component of the property taxes. That makes up about seventy-five percent of the total property taxes received by the communities. So keep that in mind, that we're simply rebating back the additional valuation to the developer. The aggregate amount will not exceed one million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, with this, the city's only obligated to rebate back the property or the tax increment financing revenues that we actually received. So we're talking about the valuation increase that is associated with the Main Street Market. Once again, that is being generated based off the minimum tax assessment agreement that the developer's required to sign of four point four million dollars. So let's go ahead, Mandy, if we could. A little bit of the math on this, when we looked at those three homes that were on the site, that was five oh three Main Street, seven oh four Independent Street, seven oh six Independent Street. In total, they generated right around twenty-six hundred dollars in property taxes. Now, from the non-IF property taxes, so this is the amount that the community will be keeping, that is, the city of Pella, Marion County, and Pella Community School Districts, that amount that will be generated from the Main Street Market is fifteen thousand six hundred dollars. Previously, it was right around twenty-six hundred dollars. So we have a net annual increase in property taxes received by the community of thirteen thousand dollars on it as well. So even though we are rebating back a majority of the taxes, please keep in mind, once again, this was a blighted area. One of the key goals was blight remediation through economic development activity. One of the key needs in the city's comprehensive plan was additional dining options, unique dining options for the community. We certainly feel this meets the needs of adding, certainly aligned with the city's comprehensive plan as well. In addition, we also believe that the Main Street Market has the potential to draw additional visitors to our community, and could lead to further economic development within the surrounding areas as well. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, I believe we've covered each one of these items that we have here. And we also believe, once again, I want to emphasize, that that Main Street Market strongly aligns with the strategic goals identified in the city's comprehensive plan. And we also discussed that very subject when the property was resold in two thousand and twenty-one. Now, as a result of this, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval of this resolution and the associated development agreement with the Main Street Market. And with that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
All right, thank you. Mike, any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Counsel, comments?
Confidence level of being done by December of twenty-two, pretty high, when you...
Based off what we understand where the construction is, we believe the developer's on track to have it substantially completed by December thirty-first of this year.
Anything else? Okay, any member of the audience comment on this item? Yes?
What happens if they don't meet the obligation? And I guess my other question before that even, why wasn't this done before they started turning dirt? This feels like the project's three-quarters done before we have an agreement. Explain, can you explain that?
Well, we do have an agreement that was made last June, June...Mandy, can you go back through the slides?
It was July of two thousand and twenty-one.
On July sixth of two thousand and twenty-one, council approved a resolution of support for the development. This is just finalizing that now. So we have an agreement.
This is what was proposed on that day?
Yeah, that was agreed to between the developer and the city at that time.
Even that, why wasn't it done before they turned dirt? It feels like they got into a project, and it got bigger than they thought it was going to be, and now they want money from us.
No, that's not true. All of these terms were agreed on July sixth. When did the construction start, Jay?
Yes.
When did it start?
It's been so long, I don't remember.
After that time.
Yeah, after that time, builder takes the risk.
Yeah, we've been there.
And to answer your other question, if they don't, if they don't do what the development agreement calls for, they don't get the tax increment financing.
So they have to be done the first of the year?
Yes, they have to be done, they have to...
Operational fully.
They have to operate exactly what you see.
Not fully.
Not operational, building up the completes.
That's construction of the building.
But then why do you have all the other about being able to provide food and open eight days a week if they're not going to be open? That's part of the agreement, so then they have to be operational by that date.
The substantial completion date for the project that's mentioned in the development agreement is December thirty-first on it. And it's typically when a project's associated, if they're not materially in compliance and don't operate the Main Street Market in terms of the development agreement, the simple answer is, is they're not eligible for tax increment financing rebates. So the developer has a strong incentive to open the Main Street Market and keep it open, in accordance with the city's outline.
So on the first, they'll be functional?
What's required is the building has to be constructed by December thirty-first.
Then why do you have all the terms about being open so many days a week?
Well, because they have to, once it's operational, yes. They have to be open six days a week, at least eight hours a day, and these use, this is what's going to be produced.
Four hours later.
Well, the reason why it's December thirty-first is so it goes on the tax also January first, two thousand and twenty-three. And that's important for the minimum tax assessment. So that's the, that's the obligation on that.
Anything else?
As business people, they would have, I think, every incentive to open in early December. But whether or not that will happen, we don't know.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
Support, Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banztra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Motion passed. So moving to Resolution number six-five-one-four entitled, "Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Development Agreement Between the City of Pella and Pella Main Street Market LLC." Sure there's nothing to add, or?
Here, we didn't have any additional details, Mayor, to add.
Can I entertain a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Banztra.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is approved filing of citation with district court for eight thirteen point five Washington Street. I believe we tabled this at our last meeting. Staff is recommending that it remains tabled. I think Mike has an update for us.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as far as the update, we were contacted by the property owner's contractor, and they've informed us that they intend to complete or initiate the demolition in late November of this year. That same contractor has also applied for a demolition permit. And so from our standpoint, as long as progress is being made on the project, we would recommend that the citation just remain on the table to make sure that the project is initiated, the demolition is initiated late, like late this November. If it isn't, we can always reconsider it at a later date. So our recommendation this evening is to have this item remain on the table.
Reliable contractor?
We believe so.
So just on the technicality of when it remains on the table, does it ever have to be taken off the table? I mean, at some point?
Yes. And what our thoughts are, is hopefully the contractor will make decent progress on this, and hopefully we'll be able to take action on this sometime in December.
Any desire to take it off the table now?
Not if we're going to get it cleaned up.
Okay, then we will move on. Moving to Resolution number six-five-one-five entitled, "Resolution Ordering Construction of the Bossland Conference Center Repairs and Fixing a Date for Hearing Thereon and Taking on Bids Therefore."
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And to keep taking away with this resolution, what it really does is establishes December sixth is the public hearing date for the Bossland Conference Center renovation project, and also gives staff authorization to seek bids for the project. And a little bit of background on this project, the Bossland Conference Center that we have pictured up on the big board did sustain significant water damage in early two thousand and twenty. Now, as far as the city's insurance policy, we'll cover all costs to restore the facility to its original condition and bring the facility up to code. We did discuss the scope of services, or the scope of the project, rather, on September sixth this year. What's being proposed as far as the project and the scope of the project is similar to the items that we discussed on September sixth. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, Blinger and Associates is the engineer on the project, and they will also provide construction observation services for the city as well. Their recommended, or their opinion of probable cost for the project is just under five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Now, we have the big ticket items that make up a lion's share of the renovation that's being proposed this evening up on the big board. It is, you can see, is reconstruction of the facility, replacing all floors, walls, ceilings, counters, and interior doors. And there's also plans to install an elevator in the facility as well. Now, as far as our insurance carrier, we have reviewed the proposed project with them as well, and we have received their blessing up to this point. So let's go ahead, Mandy, please. Now, as far as what we just covered earlier, those were base bids, and those are insurance or reimbursement eligible items. We thought it would be a good idea, what we talked about on September sixth, to include what we call alternative items, items that would likely need to be repaired at the conference center in the future as well. Those items totaled just under a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, and we do have those listed up on the big board as well. So once again, just depending on where the bids turn out, we'll consider those alternates, and if funding allows, we may authorize a few of them as well. But right now, we don't see any harm in seeking bids for those items, because eventually they will need to be addressed as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, if council were to approve this resolution, staff will hold a bid letting on the project on November twenty-ninth. Public hearing date would be December sixth. They receive bids and word of contract. And then hopefully, if everything goes well, we'd be able to issue notice to proceed on the project on December sixteenth. And final completion of the project is dated in working days, and it's right around two hundred and ten working days. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation on this item. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Support.
Support.
DeAnstruck Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randerhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to ordinance number 1020. Please bear with me on this one. This is the mouth. Entitled, "In Ordinance Providing That General Property Taxes Leavied and Collected Each Year on All Property Located Within the Prairie Ridge Urban Renewal Area in the City of Pella, County of Marion, State of Iowa, By and For the Benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Pella, County of Marion, Pella Community School District, and Other Taxing Districts, Be Paid to a Special Fund for Payment of Principal and Interest on Loans. Money is advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with Prairie Ridge Urban Renewal Area Prairie Ridge Urban Renewal Plan." This is the first reading. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, we'll try to summarize this one to the best of our ability, but the easiest way to look at this is the Prairie Ridge development is located right here, and what this ordinance really does is for everything that you see in the shaded area, just orientate everyone, Washington Street is down here, New Fifield Road extension is up here, the 90, some odd, I believe, 94 lot residential subdivision is located right here for Prairie Ridge. If council recalls, we had a joint development agreement that we approved with Marion County for this project. In accordance with the development agreement, Marion County reimbursed the developer for the public infrastructure that was installed within the development. What this ordinance simply does is, if you look at the track history on it, we've already approved the urban renewal plan, we've already approved the development agreement, and we've done all the legislative items up to this point. What we're doing with this ordinance, which allows is everything within this boundary right here, we're going to collect the property taxes off that, and we're going to take the tax increment financing revenues. So this is the new valuation of the new buildings or the new homes that are built in the, in, in the subdivision. And we're going to rebate that back to Marion County so they can make their debt service payments on this project. That's all we're simply doing. What this ordinance does is just allows us to set up, set up a special district to collect the property taxes within here, and this is in terms in alignment with the development agreement. But it's a legislative piece that you have to complete, it's the last step in the development agreement, and that's approval of your TIF ordinance. And that's really what we're doing here with it. All funds are going to be rebated back to Marion County. They'll use those increment valuations to pay their debt service on what they issued for debt for this project as well. So with that, Mandy, let's go ahead with it. And just as, as a matter of housekeeping on this, and we really view this as a housekeeping ordinance, we are requesting waiver of the second and third readings in order to meet the December 1st deadline to publish the ordinance and certify the debt for Marion County. So with that, Mr. Mayor, be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung Hopkins, any discussion?
What, what was the, was the, is this a 20-year TIF?
It's actually a 15-year, I believe, so...
And then maybe it's probably not our problem because the, the county issued the bonds, but with the development that has occurred so far, does that match with what their debt servicing is?
Yeah, what we have is, we're actually ahead of schedule on the Prairie Ridge development. What we have as far as the financial projections, I believe, maybe a little bit off, but we anticipate that 28 homes will either be under construction. I believe that the end of, that main constructor will be under construction at the end of this year. So that's ahead of the financial projections that we had. So, so far, it's met the intent on it that we've had. The new homes that are out there are succeeding expectations.
So the county's probably glad about that.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons we have to work with the county to make sure we certify the debt, to make sure that they capture all the increments they can to pay back their debt, so...
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Randerhorst?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Motion passed.
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third readings, not for housekeeping, but so we don't have to hear Don read it again.
DeAnstruck, Score, any discussion about the motion to waive the second and third reading? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randerhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Now I need a motion for adoption of ordinance number 1020.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Randerhorst DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randerhorst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1021, which is very similar to the one you just heard, so indulge me for a minute or two. Entitled, "In Ordinance Providing That General Property Taxes Leavied and Collected Each Year on Certain Property Located Within the Southwest Urban Renewal Area in the City of Pella, County of Marion, State of Iowa, By and For the Benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Pella, County of Marion, Pella Community School District, and Other Taxing Districts, Be Paid to a Special Fund for Payment of Principal and Interest on Loans. Money is advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Southwest Urban Renewal Area Cooperative Project Area, AKA SubArea 3." This is the first reading.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. Very, as Mayor Ward stated, very similar ordinance that we're considering, as we did previously with the Prairie Ridge development. This is a new housing development, once again, this is the Harvest Housing Development, and just to orientate everyone when we talk about Harvest Investments, Bossland and Drive is right here. So the ordinance that we're discussing this evening would be everything in this blue outline that we have right here. And once again, what this would allow, just to simplify things, is to capture the property taxes that are generated. So this would be the new property taxes, the new buildings that were built on site. We're going to capture those property taxes, and we're going to rebate those funds back to the developer, assuming the property taxes are paid. Now, in this case, when we look at the public infrastructure for Harvest Investment, we have the new road that extended from Bossland and Drive that comes down to our, our new senior housing development right in here. There's 22 single-family homes that are located right in here. And then we also had a new road that was extended down over here. Now, the big board, I do apologize for the second bullet point, but the public infrastructure cost, I believe, was right around $2.8 million. But when we look at those single-family homes and the cost of the private investment on the homes, that's probably worth a 5.8, what was incurred from it. But the public infrastructure was 2.8, right around there. What was agreed to is we remated or agreed to reimburse the developer for up to $2.1 million on future tax increment finance revenues generated from the development. So this would be the tax increment financing revenues that are generated from the new homes that are built on the development, and it's based on purely on those revenues that are received by the city, and we're rebating it back to the developer for the cost of the public infrastructure. So once again, this is a legislative item, this is the last item on the legislative process to adopt your TIF readings, and very similar requests that we had before on this as well. We are also requesting to waive the second and third readings so we can certify the debt for this TIF, for this TIF district. So with that, Mr. Mayor, be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Hopkins, Score, any discussion?
There are some beautiful homes along that new road. Especially when you see them from the backside.
Yeah, from the golf course.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randerhorst?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Support.
Randerhorst DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randerhorst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Randerhorst DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randerhorst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to abstract bills, of bills number 2114, can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Support.
Randerhorst Hopkins, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randerhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any member of council have any other business you want to address us with this evening? Any member of the public have any other business that you'd like to address the council with this evening? If so, please step to the microphone, state your name and address. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we were going to adjourn to a policy and planning session to discuss the sidewalk inspection program, or give an update, I should say. Okay, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to go ahead and turn the floor over to our planning and zoning director, Jerry Bidas, to walk the council through the sidewalk program updates. So, Jerry, please update the council.
Thank you, Mike. This year, we're, we're getting halfway through our sidewalk inspection program. As you can see, we were on hiatus the last year through the pandemic, so now we're back with the inspection program. We've inspected approximately, and I don't know how the PowerPoint went, but I can just fill off my notes, we've inspected approximately 718 panels. And of those, 671 did replace. And as we go on, the additional process, people are doing as it does this week, we haven't inspected this week, but we've noticed quite a few crews in town replacing panels. What will happen is, we get to the December 28th date, which is the time you voluntarily have to replace the panel. At that point in time, we'll basically close up for the season. When spring rolls around, we'll start the bidding process, we'll start the reinspection because a few people may be able to get out of the water, who operates and replace the panels. But ultimately, in the spring, we'll start the assessment process. Now, this, the people are obligated to fix the panels voluntarily. If not, the city will go in with the contractor, which is approved by council and debated, and then it ultimately is assessed back to the property owners. But we try every possible reason to get people voluntarily to do this. We'll note that there are 53 city-owned defective panels in this process, and we believe that those will be fixed by the contractor when we deal with it. Finally, one last time, in spring, we'll do a subsequent update to make sure, one last time, that people have fixed voluntarily, and then we'll move into the final debate process. So with that, that is a rough synopsis of where the program stands. I know it's been a topic, we have numerous phone calls on this, so it is quite a community topic at this time, and I'll be happily answering any questions you have.
Jerry, that, that final panel or the letdown where the sidewalk intersects with the street, is that the property owner's problem, or with ADA and stuff, is that the city's panel to maintain?
In your packet, you actually have sidewalk inspection criteria that we have our contractor go out, but the contractor will go out and inspect panels structurally. An actual four-by-four panel, they'll look for a horizontal crash, they'll look for vertical crash, they'll look for lifting between the panels, and then they geotag, and we actually have, this year we have geotag, so we'll have a GIS database tracking all panels throughout the city in the future. The one area engraved was where a panel, a sidewalk, actually touches a curb, and that is not explained in the policy and procedures. So that is a rare area, but normally, we look for what we consider a public health and safety hazard, which would be a trip hazard. This could, this can happen at any time during the year, but any time a sidewalk panel deviates by an intramore to any other horizontal surface, we consider it a trip hazard. So normally, the contractor would inspect that and flag it for us. In some cases, you know, you can't say why they didn't catch this one, but we then subsequently will notify the property owner that they do have a trip hazard and to please fix it.
And Jerry, just on that, I think, answer the question, when you have those panels that have the truncated domes, if they intersect with a public street, that's the city's responsibility. If it intersects with a private street, it's been treated as the property owner's responsibility. So that's the distinction.
Okay. There's one out there on Bossland and Drive that was brought to mind, and it is bad.
Yes, we received, when the contractor was out fixing that specific section of panels, we actually got a comment, call in from one of the residents, I believe, with that complex, asking why that one wasn't being torn up. We then went out and inspected it, noticed that it had a substantial deviation, and then notified the HOA that they need to be fixing that panel.
So that was their responsibility?
Correct.
I will say that Chief and I spoke at Fairhaven East, and we were challenged to walk around the neighborhood with walkers and perhaps a wheelchair. So if you see the two of us doing that, we have not lost our minds. We have only accepted the challenge, and I take it on wholeheartedly. I believe you do, Chief, as well. So we may be calling you about some panels as well as we walk about.
Certainly, please do.
Okay, we're even thinking about possibly recording it, so if anyone would like to join us, there is, there are walkers and wheelchairs for all, so, and they're actually going to loan them to us, aren't they?
One with a seat.
Yes, yes, yeah, and the tennis balls, yeah, so...
Is the $200 to $250 city replaced, is that the city replaced cost, or does that build up if the city ends up having to replace it? That will be the anticipated contract cost when we vet it out now. That's why we explain to everybody that we're anticipating those costs historically, what the materials are going for today, but when we actually did that get, it may deviate from that. Now, is that, if a citizen calls now and is complying, what are they paying to replace their panel now? That is their own negotiated contract with the local, contract with the local citizens. Anybody heard a word on the stra, is it, is it...
When we went through this, because we were in the first round of this, we couldn't